Welcome, I got the bag out here if you need any more. We're waiting for the city manager now, so.
All right, I'm gonna call the Tuesday, August 10th, 2010, committee the whole meeting to order, and it is 6:00, 7:00 PM. Roll call. Councilman Burgess?
Here.
Councilwoman Lobos?
Here.
Councilman Maldonado?
Here.
Councilman Shelley?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Waldman?
Here.
Mayor Bateman. He, for the record, he's on vacation. Additions, deletions, deferrals, city manager?
Um, Vice Mayor, I have, um, part of one addition, and it's a then do that's reflecting your revised agenda, amended agenda, um, under 1038. Um, it's actually an item that is very similar, it's identical to, uh, the item on tab four, and therefore, I would like, if you have permission, to move it to, um, that tab, and, um, so that you make the decision concurrently. Uh, one affects, uh, 328, Southwest 328th Street, and the other one, uh, Southwest 320th.
Okay. Yeah, um, if you don't mind, um, Mr. Manager, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Brea, you explained it to me the other day, very, very simple, and could you just repeat what you said to me the other day when I asked, I think it was yesterday?
Absolutely. Um, basically, this item, um, covers an extension of the grant that was, um, awarded the city several years ago for the expansion of 320th Street, and also 328th, these are the two separate items. The reason for this extension is basically to, first of all, ensure that the city does not lose the appropriation of the funds that we got, and it's roughly $4 million for 328th Street, and roughly $2 million for 320th Street. What this extension allows the federal government to do is they have certain procedures that they have to follow in order to get a project actually approved and built, and this extension allows the feds to be able to do those, um, um, procedures, basically, which is certain studies that they have to do, and basically, it entails them going through the process of selecting what they call the preferred alternative. I mean, we know what the preferred alternative is already, but they have to go through all those steps to just put the checks on the checklist as they, as they move along. And what that, that procedure basically ensures that we will be able to keep that, that funding, and build a project at the end of the day, that's what it does.
Okay. So, all those phone calls that I've received about the streetlights, and the berms, and all these different questions, nothing's gonna change, it's all gonna be done, so this is just to ensure that it happens that way. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Move it. Madam Mayor, excuse me, if I could, if I could suggest, um, so that would be, uh, 3A and 4E, you can move them both ahead at the same time with one vote. That's both of the deferments.
Okay.
3A on the amended agenda, and, and then 4E on the regular agenda, tab four.
Do you mind adding that to your motion, Mr. Williams?
Uh, I'll add it.
Okay. A second? All right. Any comments? Questions?
I have a language question, Vice Mayor?
Certainly.
Um, through the chair, there is a language that Mr. Brea used that said "extension", how is that different than deferment? Like, it seems like "extension" just means that we're going to extend the timeframe, but deferment means that it's just being taken off the table for now, is that, is there a difference, or it's just insignificant?
I can answer it. Uh, well, it's, in my eyes, it's the same thing, they're not, they're not taking the money away, they're just deferring it from a particular fiscal year to the following fiscal year, once they get the, the process done, that's all.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, um, we call for a vote, Madam Clerk?
Senator?
Is it roll call?
No.
Okay. All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item?
Uh, there's, there's one on the addition, I would like to add under my, uh, a section under my comments, if I may, uh, just to, um, seek your guidance, or your direction, uh, in reference to the Urban Design Institute, uh, if you recall, a few months ago, Katie Sorensen, the Commissioner of Katie Sorensen, uh, was here, and, and she spoke of, uh, an urban design initiative, and, and the availability, availability of funds, funding, from Dade County, uh, to help us in that endeavor, I, I would, I just wanna your, your guidance, and it's so that we can move forward with that.
Madam Mayor, if we could just, just sort of be a little more organized, what we're doing is we're adding items, and we're considering them at the same time, so all you want is just a motion to add this to his report?
Okay.
Would be enough at the moment.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, and your report?
There's nowhere. There's not a separate.
You're trying to...
Just add it at the end, just add it at the end of the agenda.
That was my thing.
Okay. So, we can't talk about it now?
Just give you a brief, you can't, I was just trying to...
Okay. So, so it's on the agenda, but we will be adding a report from the city manager about the urban design?
Perfect. Initiative.
Initiative, at the end of the meeting, so remind me, since it's on the agenda. All right. Now, can I move forward? Okay. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the July 13th, 2010 minutes?
I moved to a second.
Seconds. Okay, moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next one is tab number two, and that is for the Renaissance Charter School Financing with EFGFC, so I would ask Mr. Manager to give us a report on that.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council, um, just a quick update, and I, and I provided that information via email to you last week, uh, the school received the, the TCO, and they're, were working day and night, uh, to, to get that official CO, uh, you know, within the next 30 days. I'm pretty sure they're gonna get it, you know, very soon. That's great news, that building looks incredibly different, and, and they're moving along as predicted. So, uh, this was before you now, is a, uh, an adoption, a proposed adoption, um, and to adopt a resolution endorsing, um, the issuance by the Development Finance, uh, the Florida Development Finance Corporation, or FD, FC, uh, of bonds not to exceed the $7 million, uh, for education facilities, for, you know, for the, for the school, and the bond, um, uh, the, um, what do you call that? The, uh, the proceeds will be used to fund the investment that's been made so far on, on, on the school, on the facility itself. The, um, the, we don't have any, um, liability involved, there isn't, we're not, we're not the one, the body issuing the bonds, uh, even though we're not the body issuing the bonds, we are, I, I checked with our bond council, and they're, they're in, they're in sync with all the provisions in that resolution, um, they're, they don't have any disagreement. Uh, also, our attorneys endorsed, I mean, reviewed it, and we feel confident that, that we are, this is, it's a, it's a step that pursuant to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code, uh, we need to follow, endorsing the issuance of the bonds, uh, and it will only facilitate, uh, you know, the funding for, for what they have been doing.
And it's my understanding that we have, we need to do this in order for them to...
Correct.
To, to receive this. Richard, do you need to read the resolution?
No, it's just a committee meeting, so you can just approve.
All right. Um, um, could I entertain a motion, please, to pass this?
Yeah, I'll move it. Second.
Okay.
With a question.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Um, the, the $7 million bond, um, the, there's proceeds of the bond to renovate an existing dormitory facility owned by, as you say, we have no, um, you know, really legal clarification to, after the 30 years, it goes back to the city of Homestead?
Correct.
Right? So, are you sure that this, with that agreement, that they have, you've given them the, that we are exempt from any liability?
Correct.
Even with that, uh, even with that, what we have signed, that it will be given back?
Yes, sir. There are several provisions, there are more than one provision in that resolution, one section in that resolution, that, that address the, the issue of liability, and it exempts the city, uh, from any subsequent now or then liability.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Before we move forward with the vote, um, Mr. Hage has asked for a few minutes to, uh, give a little update on the school.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Um, I won't take much time, I know it's a committee of the whole, and I'll come back at a future council meeting and give a full presentation. I thought it might be appropriate, since we came here, and we do appreciate the support for the vote, um, that I give you a brief, uh, picture update, in case you didn't make it to the site yet, and we would invite all of you at your convenience to come to the site, and we could obviously set up a tour for you, and I would like to also see if there's a, a date tonight that might work in general for the council for a grand opening, which we'd like to do soon, since school is opening. Um, here you can see some of the renovations to the site, uh, there's a bathroom, for example, um, everybody, I think, here has been through the site previous to when it was renovated, um, just a few short months ago, most of you were at our groundbreaking, it's really quite amazing what has happened here, and I have to give a lot of credit, most of, in fact, all the credit to JJW, the construction company that we hired, that has done just a first-class job, they've worked, you know, very well, I have to also give credit to your building department and your staff here, um, you've had tremendous little, and I mean, we're gonna do a more formal presentation later, but really, just working to make sure this happened on time, on budget, and, and, and no shortcuts, this is a first-class building. Here's some of the demolition work, previous, uh, how it looked when they knocked everything out, as you know, the, the entire roof system had to be torn out, this building's been sitting there for 20 years, unused, um, um, just knocked, cleared everything out, and, uh, what they have today is just, it's really quite, quite nice. Um, some of the landscape is not finished yet, we're still finishing that up this week, furniture will start coming in this weekend, teachers actually start setting up their rooms on Monday, um, and I just went over there with our council at Mizwali, and we went to the school, and it just, it just looks great, um, they've obviously punched through for the, uh, exit on, um, Palm Avenue, or Palm Drive, and, um, we're gonna be working with the county on making sure we can get maybe some slowdown signs in there, to keep that traffic a little slower, 'cause they do come through there kind of fast. Um, there's another bathroom, I thought, you know, if you see bathrooms in a typical public school nowadays, they're, they're, they're not very inviting, you know, these, we try to make them look nice with tile, and put in, um, all the fixtures are the, you know, the, the ones you just put your hand in, and they automatically start, um, so the investment's been made. We're also improving right now the, um, the area right here for the fields, so the field improvement will take place over the next two to three weeks, you'll be seeing that take place, so that ultimately, we have the two soccer fields slash football fields per the city agreement, those fields will be available to city residents in the after-hours and evenings, and to the school during the day, and we will be maintaining the cost of those fields, um, and, um, again, uh, here's another view from aerial, uh, aerial view of the, of the site, what it looks like now, um, back during some of the, the construction when there was no grass around, and you can see the parking lot being put in, and you know, the site originally, when I went through it, uh, it's hard to envision what it could become, but when you see it now, you can see how it can be a great school, it really works great, the classrooms, there's a lot of natural light through there, um, and, and the way it's set up with the front area, and the reception area, and the, um, the area for, um, the cafeteria, and there's a classroom, um, the classrooms are big, um, really nice size, because the, the way the hallways worked, and with the existing dormitories, and we cleared it out, um, made for really nice-sized classrooms, there's a part of the front entrance way, and then, uh, some of the parking lot area, um, little workrooms, we already have science desks up, um, and, and art rooms are set up, we have, uh, wash stations, computer centers, technology's already, uh, put into the, into the, and this is great, this is, this is jobs, this has been, as you know, we used, um, a, a, a large majority, and I'll come back later for a full presentation, of the subcontractors for this entire job, and the workers throughout, we're all Homestead-based, so, uh, we'll come back and give you exact numbers on that later, and, um, well, that's pretty much it. And then, I just wanted to mention one other thing, and that is the, um, grand opening, we'd like to look at potentially the Friday after school starts, which would be, uh, August 27th, we are thinking maybe in mid-morning, something around 10:00 AM, that way, kids are already in school, and then, the, the children and, and parents would be invited, um, we're gonna try to host it inside with the, with the heat and the rain, and that, I think that'd be nicer for you there, Vice Mayor, and, um, and have a nice, uh, grand opening, and invite folks from the school district, the county, everybody that's been involved in the process, so, um, unless there's some problem with that, that you might want to tell me about now, we're gonna, uh, go ahead and make that official, and we'll get the invites out.
Um, since Anna and Lourdes takes care of our calendars, would it be all right if we have them call you first thing in the morning?
Not a problem.
And, uh, and so Sherri, or, or, or Madam Clerk, could you please ask Anna or Lourdes to give Mr. Hage a call? And I just want to say, for all those naysayers that said it couldn't be done, it's amazing. Thank you very much.
Well, we made a commitment, and we plan to keep it, and we would obviously like to, as soon as this, um, project is complete, we'd like to, uh, start discussing phase two, and there's a lot of kids and parents now looking for phase two, and so, um, when you give us the direction to continue to work with your city manager and city attorney for that, I think there's already some work going on, we'd like to kind of bring that back and have that discussion, and we do have already have, I don't think it was in here, that's okay, um, we have some sketches of phase two, we'll bring back for a regular council meeting and have those discussions for it.
Okay. Well, for right now, let's call a vote. Uh, do we need to repeat the motion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John Witten. Okay, uh, the next on the agenda is tab three, and that's the foreclosed property federal registry, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council, um, the Federal Property Registration Corporation, or FPRC, uh, which is representing here today, um, the, um, it's proposing services that are related to the foreclosed or abandoned-type properties within the city, this, uh, this, this program has been put in effect in, in other cities such as Cutler Bay, uh, and, and in fact, our attorneys have worked in, in that city as well, on this, you know, in the, in the process of adopting the ordinance, and then subsequent amendments. Um, the program pretty much identified, uh, properties that are entering the foreclosure stage, uh, that are, whether abandoned, or vacant, et cetera, uh, the mortgage holders must register with this company at a fee, and the, and, and therefore, once they're registered, that list, that, that database list, is, uh, is, will be available to the city, and what that would do is make our job from the co-compliance standpoint a lot easier. Many times, we, not only from co-compliance, but also in, in the Department of Development Services, or the city clerk, have a very tough time, even helping local realtors, that could be a huge help, uh, but we do have a tough time identifying property owners and mortgage holders, uh, when we're trying to locate them for various reasons, whether it's the code enforcement, uh, action, whether we're putting a lien on a property, or we need to follow up with some, some code action, or whether we need to find property ownership information to send out notification, uh, for an upcoming hearing, et cetera. Uh, it makes our lives a lot easier to have that information available, as you know, once the properties become, enter this foreclosure cycle, sometimes banks sell those, um, portfolios to other banks, and in, while the properties are in transition, nobody really knows who the owner is, and who, who, who would respond to, you know, to the different problems that arise, relative to each one of those properties, so, um, in that regard, it helps, it will helps us a lot. In, in addition, uh, and this is just sort of like the heads-up, there, there's obviously a first reading and a second reading that will take place, there, we have to work with the attorneys on creating those agreements, because there's a second part too, that, that whereby the city will share, um, the revenues, uh, the, the fees that, that are generated with the company, so there is a revenue stream there that we could also, uh, tap on, tap into. Uh, with that, I, the, the gentleman that, that represents the company's here, if you have any more detailed questions at this time, or, or any of me, I'd be more than happy to entertain.
All right. Let me get a, a motion on the floor.
I move it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, I just want to say, as a Realtor for over 30 years, this is so important, and it's not only important to people like me, or, or other Realtors in town, or, or owners, um, it's important for the homeowners associations too, because it's a nightmare, it's a nightmare, and I'm vice president of my homeowners association, and, and trust me, you just go nowhere fast some days, and I have every gadget known to man on my computer that I pay for, to be able to find this stuff, and I can't find it, you know, half the time, so, that's just my little two cents. Um, Mr. Shelley?
Madam Vice Mayor, I, I just had a question as far as, um, like, how's it funded? I mean, how, I know you were mentioning about the second part being the fees, is that code enforcement fees?
It doesn't cost anything to the city, this is a program that they will provide, they will work with code enforcement, and, and as the database is developed, and, and these mortgage holders come online, uh, the city will share that fee, that...
But what is the, where's the fee? Each, per each, uh, the way that the ordinances generally work, is that, uh, the, um, with each registration, the, uh, the fee in, in Cutler Bay is $150, so, and the agreement that's in Cutler Bay is that the fee is split, so that, that every home, every, every registration costs $150, and generally, the fees are, there's some split fee arrangement between the company that provides this service and the city.
But primarily, this is applying to banks, correct? Foreclosed properties, this doesn't affect the typical homeowner having to pay a registration fee of any kind, correct?
It varies.
Oh, 'cause that, that's, that's my concern, that's why I wanted to know how this was funded, are, are we now gonna tell our homeowners they have to pop up $150 to register in this program, or is it only applying toward foreclosed properties?
Once the property enters, it starts to enter the, and this is my understanding, correct?
I'm gonna ask the gentleman to come forward and speak, it's my understanding that probably, and you correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably gonna be at least 98 percent, thanks.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that, uh, first of all, thank you for inviting me here tonight, my name is Jim Vreeland, Vice Mayor, city staff, and council members, I'm really here to be an expert, and give you some insights on how the program is working, um, the big question you had, uh, council member, is, is this a burden to homeowners? And the answer is, no. Uh, the registration fee that's paid, is paid by the lenders, uh, lenders are geared up to register properties, I'm a former banker, uh, the other principals of FPRC, Federal Property Registration, are bankers, so we have relationship with the bankers, our database has 2,000 lenders in it, so this fee is actually paid, uh, by the, by the, by the lender, has nothing to do with the homeowner, it's not a burden, and it's certainly not a tax. So, I, hopefully, I answered your question.
Can't get better than that.
And, uh, if you have any other questions right now, I'd be happy to entertain them before I go back and sit down.
Did you have a question?
No, I just...
Oh, I'm sorry, it was Mr. Lobos.
Are you?
Well, thank you. I'm sorry, I thought it was on Mr. Williams, okay, so it's Ms. Lobos, so...
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I mean, this is a great service, because I think a lot of times we think about the city of Homestead, and how hard we've been hit with the rate of foreclosures, and this at least will give us some significant numbers to go by, and let's say that there's grants or some kind of relief funding by the federal government that we'd be able to tap into by having this kind of information. My only question is, um, it was introduced that this, your company is used by other cities as well?
Correct.
And given the way that foreclosure market is in the country, I'm just curious to know how many companies are there in our area that are providing the services that you're providing, and...
In the United States, there's no other companies that, that does what we do, uh, we're a sole source, uh, we have, uh, 10 contracts with governments throughout the state of Florida, we have, um, other cities that we're working, counties we're working with, and Georgia and Pennsylvania as well.
Thank you.
I guess the, the, the unique thing about this is that, um, it is a innovative piece of legislation, because you're holding, the owner of the property in most cases still is the, is the, is the, let's say, the household, the household who owned the house, and the, and what you're doing is you're imposing liens, or fines, on a non-owner of this property. Um, and we feel like it's defensible, and so we approved it when they initiated this in 2008 in Cutler Bay, but if, if, if the question is whether, there was no question, but I'm raising the question, 'cause I like to tell you about things, if the question is, is there some court that has approved this kind of system, the answer's, you know, that we don't, there's a bit, no case that we can point to which says that this is, um, that this is okay, this is an aggressive approach, which, uh, you know, will, um, obviously be of great benefit, but I do want to tell you that, you know, the possibility, now, we've been doing this for how long in Cutler Bay?
Uh, Cutler Bay, we signed the agreement in January, um, to your point, there's about 400 ordinances around the country, there's huge cities that have passed similar type of ordinances, um, our point of view is that the banks don't mind registering properties because the fee is minimal, and it gives the bank an opportunity to make sure that the property preservation company, um, is doing their job, so it's another set of eyes for code enforcement, so that, you know, they don't mind registering their properties, because they want to hear from code enforcement, and they want to make it easier for code enforcement to contact the lender.
Yeah, so that would make it less likely that we'd be challenged, but I can't tell you that there's a specific provision someplace that allows us to do this, but as, as the gentleman indicated, it is being done, it hasn't been challenged, um, so, I just, I did want to...
Any other questions?
Madam? I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm glad to see something like this, uh, I was actually working, um, with city managers, trying to find some type of resolution, I've been, dealt with this issue, and, and with Tom as well, there's been homes that have been, uh, left abandoned, and, and I'm running to Tom saying, "Who owns this house?", and he's been working on the process, so, and, um, I'm glad to see this effort come before us, even, even if it's innovative, and it's good to see that we're implementing our city, and so that we could start, um, getting owner to, to start taking care of that property, so, just wanna make that, uh...
And the procedure will be, is that, um, because the, the manager is anxious to get this thing implemented, and, is that, um, we are circulating a draft of an ordinance, which we hope to have on your agenda, it will be different from the ordinance that's in your booklet, but it'll be on for first reading on Monday night, if that's all right with you, and then, you'll have time to look at it between first and second reading, whatever changes, and then, at second reading, there'll be an agreement between, uh, the city and this company to implement the program, so, we are gonna try to move it along, obviously, you can stop it anytime you want, but we're gonna, our, our hope is to actually have an ordinance on for first reading for, on Monday night.
Okay. I just want to say, I'm doing backflips, I know you can't see me doing them, but I'm, I'm doing backflips up here, because I've been reading about this online and nationwide, and, and don't think these banks are prepared to pay this, that pay this fee, I mean, they, they, have you had any problem at all?
No, the hardest problem we have is, like you said, is tracking them down, but we got a, we got a good database, and we understand the difference between, uh, the more EG and the servicer, and the subservicer, it's, it's a very complicated, uh, task, that we...
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
But I think it's really great that we, that we're gonna get it here in our city, maybe, so I'm gonna, thank you very much, I'll call the vote, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we'll see you Monday night.
I will be here.
Okay.
The next order of business is our finance, uh, Chair, Mr. Williams, I'll turn this over
And that's tab five.
EFC.
Five.
Tab five, huh? Um, I'll turn it back over to the EFC manager.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Chair, members of the City Council, this is a very simple step. We're upgrading the alarm system within the police department and quite well, the system is widely used. I know that I used it in other cities, seen it used widely in De County. And it's a proven system. It'll save us at the end of the day, money and time spent, which otherwise will involve our police officers. Instead, the code officers can take and track some of these alarm inquiries and false alarm situations for the department. So I recommend that we enter into this, that we purchase this software.
Move it.
Want to call for a vote?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, so any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got one quick question.
Okay.
And I think maybe Captain Ray can help me with this. What is the amount, there'd be a fee attached to this right after so many occurrence of false alarms or so?
Actually, there is a fee. It's been an ongoing ordinance for several years and it's a staged fee and it's actually somewhat complex. But basically, I think it starts out at about twenty-five dollars and it moves upward depending on the number of false alarms, whether the alarm's permitted, registered, and it goes up. You get three free ones and I think if you register properly, you can basically mitigate all fees for most of the citizens. It's really designed to prevent the people who abuse their false alarm problems.
Okay. And they, so we have to, as persons, well, people who have alarms, they have to register them with the police department, with the building department?
Yes.
Is that right?
Well, they have to permit the alarm through building first and then they're supposed to register them with code enforcement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It's my understanding that this is being paid out of CRA and utilities?
Forfeiture, I believe.
No, confiscated.
Confiscated property. Forfeiture.
Forfeiture? Oh, okay. All right, sorry. I'm going to run it up. All right, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Williams, item tab six, please.
I'll let the manager take it.
Yes.
I've got some questions.
Right now, what we have is a number of, the stream of lighting that we have throughout the city and especially downtown, it's complicated. It's a system that either the lighting or the light pole poses, pose a lot of problems when we are trying to service them. It's an aging system and what we are proposing is that if it is a light pole that's located within the CRA area, then the CRA district will fund it. If it's outside, then the utilities through the enterprise fund will fund. And this will make it pretty much the same system, the same light pole that you see in Loston Park is what we see repeatedly all over the place. And it'll make it a lot easier. It's actually, will result in cost savings when it comes to the consumption. And I'm recommending that you allow us to move on with this project.
Call for a vote?
Yeah, I got a question.
You want to make a motion first though?
I think, yeah, I move the item. What's the questions?
Go right here.
My question is, is, on it, you're just doing for downtown?
We are.
According to what you.
Downtown area, the general downtown area.
Okay. All right. My problem is, the same lights that are in downtown, what are the difference between that and in the southwest area and CRA area on Fourth Street?
Fourth Street was.
Because if you're going, my problem is, if you're going to do it for Main Street, you need to do it for Fourth Street.
My understanding is that Fourth Street was redesigned and redone not that long ago and you don't have the same problems that you have in terms of fixtures that we have now, you know, along the main corridor like on Chrome, where you have older type fixtures that have been there for a long time and that you have a mismatch. Fourth Street was improved, when was the year that, do you recall? That was in the early 2000s. It was a street improvement that took place in, I think, I believe it was 2002, 2003. Those of you that were here, Madam Vice Mayor, you mind?
I remember, I don't remember the year, but it was in the early, oh, Yvonne seems to know. Okay, thank you.
But we will certainly look at that if that is, you know, something that you would like us to look into, we'll definitely do it.
And my other question is, was this already budgeted for this fiscal year out of CRA fund? Because I don't remember seeing this project.
Was this budgeted under? That was set aside under the CRA budget for capital type projects. Now specifically, I have to get back to you, but I think we have.
Some of this is being paid for out of some grant money in the utility and that money was set aside for street lighting improvements, for any energy efficiency lighting. We had also been working with CRA on this project and it's, I believe it's coded under downtown improvements. And this has been ongoing since last year. So it was on the books for CRA.
Okay, I'm not going to get into it, but I know we revised the budget, so, you know, my concern is, is that in the revised budget that we sent back, anticipating sent back, then is it still in there? Because I don't think so.
I believe we're fine with the way it was proposed in terms of the allocation and the category of the project, but I will confirm that, sir, and I will provide you that information. If it wasn't, our CRA staff would have brought this up and said that we needed an amendment to that budget as part of, you know, that would have come with this request.
We just, we just got a CRA staff.
So, well, we only have one person there helping me right now. We just increased the staff as of Friday, but, yeah.
Come on, triple.
But in the event that this had been, would have been something that was not allocated in the budget, would have come to you in that form as an amendment. And I don't believe that's the case, but I will give you the exact information and provide it by tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I have one question. When is this projected to be finished, completed? Barbara, would you know that answer? When's the projected date for this project to be finished?
It typically takes us two or three months to get the lighting fixtures. At that point, CRA was looking to pay for the labor and I'm going to just give you a very rough estimate, it'll probably be two or three months after that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
Madam Vice Mayor, what exactly, when you talk about the fixtures, is it the entire pole being replaced? Is it just the lamp? I mean, so is everything brand new?
My understanding is everything, the whole fixture.
Roundup, okay. That's why I was just, just clarification.
I will go ahead then and entertain a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We are now under tab seven, excuse me, which brings us to the, to our long-awaited welcome signs.
Correct.
Take it away.
And before you, you have the four locations, two of which, the location of US One and Sixth Street will have a small sign and that's the three and a half by eight. The location of US One and North Flagler will have the small sign, the one by the jet because we, that's also three and a half by eight because the bigger sign would obscure, you know, the local division, the line of sight for the jet. Then the third location is East Campbell Drive and 157. That will have, that's the, when you come off the turnpike right there by the school, that's, that will have the big sign, that's a six by eight. And so it will be the 1, 288 and 137 Avenue. This is the material. I didn't want to put it up here because, but it's a very, it's widely used, it's a styrofoam type material, it's very, it withstands a lot of wind force. It's the best solution when it comes to how, if you would have built it out of concrete, you had to build a breakaway and the possibility of somebody surviving an impact are reduced greatly. This would not affect, I mean, have that impact on anybody's life should they impact this, I mean, run into this. And it's widely used. I've seen it used in other cities. I used it before. The project cost, the way it's made, it's also included in the attachments. You've seen it before. And the project cost, as I'm mentioning the last time I came before you, is broken down. There was a, an initial submittal that was sent to you, showed at thirty-three thousand. We were able to redo, further reduce it to twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. That's for all four locations. And I also provided you information on the costs for, you know, for the landscaping, the lighting and irrigation as well, for all locations.
And that's all being done in-house, correct?
And that portion is being done in-house, correctly. The only portion that's not being done in-house is the installation, the fabrication and installation of the actual signs.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion with a question.
I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay. I'll make a motion with a question.
I'll second it.
Okay. First and second.
How did we come up with Leo signs to do this? No local vendors?
We didn't find any local vendors. We called everywhere through our procurement, through Dennis Parks Director. We've been calling everywhere and these people provided the best quote.
So there were other quotes to go to?
Yes, there were.
Okay, because they weren't included in the package, so.
We searched. Want to go over the other?
Procurement called local vendors and also other vendors and Impact Design was a local vendor and they were fifty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you. Just wondering.
Thank you. Mr. Shelley?
Madam Vice Mayor, do we have, are we going to be able to see any kind of color renderings or slides or anything?
That's the color.
It always ought to be that color, but as far as like the, I know last time you brought it back with the actual writing and the spacing, I mean, it was a much more detailed full size.
It was an actual color render.
Right.
I'd be more than happy to give you that. Unfortunately, it was not included in.
I just was curious about that. And then the other question I did have is, is there plans to add additional signs, like right when you get off the turnpike there at Campbell, you know, for anybody coming in for the races, it'd be good to have a welcome to the City of Homestead sign there in addition to the other four?
I would like to see that if, you know, right now, we don't have that as, in the plans, but that is something that I would like to see, you know, find locating other spots for signs, entrance signs within the city.
The Tourism Committee will look into that, Mr. Shelley, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion, we have a first and a second. I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we go on to tab number eight, construction of the Roscoe Warren Municipal Park, Phase One A. I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, this item is the one that I've been advising to, I will be coming to you with, and it's related to some of the improvements that were part of the overall project but were not included in Phase One and therefore I'm proposing them as Phase One. Modification of Phase One because I think it's imperative that we do them at this point from a strategic construction standpoint. And those include, obviously, as you can see, the total cost is one point six nine million total and it's coming out of the impact fees, revenues, and it involves mobilization, water lines, sewer lines, the manholes, sanitary pump station, which we would be needing there and this is the right time to do. Trees and shrubs, irrigation, parking area, lighting, safety is something that you want to have out there. It's not, you know, a park that's surrounded necessarily by a lot of buildings and, or other facilities. It's standalone, pretty much park and we want, we need that extra lighting. And then on the contingency, we have the bathrooms and such, which I think this is the right time to do. Again, the intention is to do these things now and not be in the position where I come back to you at a later time to tell you that I had to tear up A, B, and C in order to get this in at a later time and therefore spending more money because of, you know, just taking it out of sequence. We decided, because we decided to take these elements out of the sequence that construction will normally follow, so. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it with a question.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Burgess, please.
Thank you. Through the chair, to the manager. How did we come up with resource reclamation services to be the vendor on this?
They are the existing.
I know they were out there, so they were just continuing.
They continue the same. And it's part of the same project. It's the same phase. It's just that we're adding this, which at the same time is part of the overall project. It's been broken down, you know, depending on the availability of money. As you recall, that portion of that money was used in other parks and this was left with, for Phase One with the three point two.
Thank you.
Any other questions to come? Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the vote, please. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, tab ten. I'll do this one too. Attorney General's VOCA grant, Mr. Manager?
This is, the police department applied for four and received a forty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollar competitive grant from the state. This grant will fund one full-time contractual victim's advocate and it will, it's designed to assist victims of crime by providing state funding compensation for violating crime. You know, and there's a list of the different crimes there that will be covered and the services that they will be providing include counseling, relocation, courtroom assistance, et cetera. We have been receiving this grant for fifteen years, so this is an ongoing grant that we go for on a yearly basis. As you know, our grants department and the police department is standing. They are the ones that bring the money constantly, so.
Superb.
I urge you to move on with this.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll second.
Okay. The three of these. Okay. The three of these did that. Any other comments or questions? I'll call the vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item we have is professional consulting services for the new dispatch control center. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. The... This corporation, I'm gonna give it a shout out. The name is Malwell?
Malwell?
Mal. Mal Corporation was engaged to provide the design of the new dispatch control center. If you... I had the opportunity to go there not that long ago, and after being absent for about eight years when I was here on my first tour, I didn't see one change. I mean, and I guarantee you, that dispatch control center looks exactly the same, and that whole building looks exactly the same as the day it was built back in the '40s, I think. It's an antique, and it really needs a renovation. It needs to be brought up to par with what we, you know, what we represent, to provide better services. And therefore, they will provide us assistance in developing the RFP. They will be interfacing with the architect and the engineers and the general contractors, and give us a general assistance during the procurement and the construction oversight. That's the scope of the work.
Okay.
It's something that was initiated already. We're following through with this step now, and we'll hopefully get it completed over the next year.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, please. I'll move it. Do we have... Okay, moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from council? All right, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we'll go back to that addition that you wanted to add, Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
On the urban design for the Main Street?
Yes. As you recall, a few months ago, Commissioner Sorensen came before you, and the gentleman's name was Dover. He was a renowned urban planner, and presented, you know, presented you with, you know, their vision as to what our downtown could end up being one day. And they had, from the urban design perspective, you know, several locations that they show you that were similar in nature, you know, to what this... what our downtown could look like. But in subsequent meetings that I had with our local architect, Robert Barnes, and Robert Barnes in turns met with Katie on numerous occasions and with Main Street. Yvonne Knowles has been very instrumental in this process. They came up with a very good idea, I think it was from the... And you know, that's my background. I'm a planner. I'm an architect and a planner. The one thing that this city needs and has needed for a number of years, and that is a downtown master plan. And so, they... I need your direction to look into this. And what the commissioner proposed was, they have funding. They have about $40,000 available that would be made available to the city so that we can hire an urban designer that will work in partnership with a committee in downtown and the city to create this plan. Now, this $40,000 funding can also, at the same time, and they will work with us on this other... On the second part of the additional funding, will help us leverage or match another grant that will be, I believe, for, you know, the similar amount, because it's a matching grant, and maybe up double the amount and be able to bring, you know, somebody on board for a year to work with the city on a contractual basis. With the city and them, and they will provide, you know, free charge their expertise and, you know, the time to come up with this plan. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think there's a lot of opportunities that have been missed throughout the years when it comes to creation of access points and connections, pedestrian connections between important places that should exist in every downtown. We have been concentrating on traffic so much that we forgot that we also should be walking a little more, especially when you are in a downtown environment. And to highlight those connections is crucial to facilitate that pattern, that walking pattern. And so, that's, again, I think it's a wonderful idea and one that I hope you feel the same, and you give me the opportunity to embark on this and come back to you with a more defined plan, with Main Street, the local architects, and come back to you and show you what we can do.
I'd like to make the motion for this because I met with Main... I've been involved with Main Street for so many years, and I met with them. I just met with them yesterday. And this is so needed. This is so very needed, and it's so gracious of our Commissioner, Katie Sorensen, to have offered this funding to us. I thought it was a very generous thing for her to do, and this city's gonna miss her desperately when she's gone. But I think we should take advantage of it, so I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second it.
Any comments or questions, please? None? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any comments, Mr. Bridges? Questions? No? Mr. Maldonado?
I just wanna make a comment that I would like for our citizens and business owners. I needed to find out a little bit more direction, but we do have the Business Development Committee, and... All right, that's weird.
Please tell me that's not an alarm going off.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I thought it was a bomber sign.
Okay. It's just for the record, it's what, a battery?
UBS.
Okay. So anybody watching, don't worry.
So anyways, what I would like to do is just have applicants start submitting applications for the Business Development Committee. We need to work on the local businesses that are here and find out ways to help them out and entertain new ones. But that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maldonado. I hope that we were able to hear that. Ms. Lobos? Any comments or... Mr. Shelley?
No, not this time. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to request an executive session in the Donaldson case, just to bring you up to date as to what's going on.
Thank you.
If the clerk could please schedule that.
Mr. Manager, any other comments from you?
I may try some time.
You've said enough. Okay. I think the buzzer is telling us it's time to adjourn. May I have a motion, please? I need a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Meeting adjourned.